Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody here today. Everybody's in the courtroom, and I don't know if we have anybody virtually today, but everybody's welcome. Our first item on the agenda today would be the county administrator items. Ted Lock, do you want to do that, or you want me to do it?
Either way, the first item that we have is discussion on the vacant board member position. The board had requested a meeting to discuss that a little bit further. I did, was in contact with the county attorney, and he did supply some information to the board. We weren't quite sure how the board went to proceed, if you will. Just had general questions, comments, discussion. If there are certain individuals that you would like to interview or go that route, we can certainly go into closed meeting under personnel matters. Or if there's more legal questions that the board has, we can certainly go into closed meeting regarding that as well. I believe Mr. Gregory was going to join online tonight as well, if you have any specific questions. He is on. Okay.
All right, board, have any questions or comments?
Well, my view is that we should put names in. That's what I'd like to see us do. For that position.
All right, so you say you want to put some names in?
Yeah. Put a name in. In that way, they can be interviewed. Move from there.
I'd like to see it sort of an application process. Somebody puts their name in with basic name, where their address is, make sure they're registered voter by after, give them then their education and/or work experience as to why they feel they should be justified. I'm not going to presume I know people in the Reedville area enough to do that.
It's probably more of a fair approach.
Yeah.
You go through like an application process and interview process. But this is just going to be for four months, correct?
Correct.
By the time we go through this process, how long will it be? I mean, this process is not going to be done in a week.
No. You've got to give people enough notice to decide what they want to do.
So by the time we're done, it may just be two meetings that they...
No, we've got to make a decision within 45 days of Ronnie's passing.
Okay.
That's what the code says, which we've got to do. We could have them potentially, if we got on the stick, we could have them in place for the September meeting.
What is this? Forty-five days is ticking, yeah?
Yes, it is. The clock's been ticking.
Clock is ticking along.
But if we get started...
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do any of, do you or any of the board members have any questions about the guidance I've provided, or can I help in any way? I will note that September 19th is forty, by my count, is 45 days from Mr. Jett's passing. So that's to give you a date.
Yep.
September 19th.
All right, so according to code, we have to appoint someone within that 45-day period?
If you choose to appoint someone, you have, you're not required to appoint someone due to the timing. Because of the timing of the general election and the end of the term, it's basically, the code basically gives you an option. You can, the board can choose to appoint someone, a qualified voter from the district to serve out the remainder of the term, or not. You're not required. If you choose to appoint someone to fulfill the remainder of the term, you need to do so within 45 days of Mr. Jett's passing, which is, as I noted, September 19th.
All right, so we actually have two options. So either we choose to appoint, or we do not do anything with it.
Yes, and then in which case, the general election would be held as it's scheduled to be held, and the election, whoever's elected for that seat would hopefully qualify and then take office in January as the normal course provides. And so that, it can work that way as well. It's up to the board to decide.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Yes, sir.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Gregory?
What's the pleasure of the board doing?
I move that we start the process to appoint somebody to District 5 within our 45-day period, using an application process. It doesn't have to be elaborate, but just know who they are, and their experience, et cetera.
Tucker? All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Move. What if we don't appoint someone?
There'll be nobody representing District 5. So for five months, because Mr. Jett last attended virtually in July, that'd be five months without representation with District 5.
Well, I guess, since his passing was, I guess, I know he hasn't, I know it hasn't been any representation, but the entire board's been trying to represent everybody there as best we can.
Well, I understand that, but we have the power and right to do this if it's so chosen.
And I agree with it. We need to move forward.
Forty-five days would be the 19th of September. Basically, that's going to give us 20, 20-some days, well, you've got to take the weekends out. We've got to get applicants here, fill the form out, and start the interviews. I'm just looking at four months, that's all. You know, it's just so short a period of time. I'm not, Tom, I'm not saying your idea ain't a very good idea. I'm just looking at timeframe.
Man, that doesn't make any difference by the time...
Wait a minute, Jim, wait a minute. You just wait a minute.
You're holding tight things up.
First time, our next board meeting would be in October for that person, which is fine. I have no problem at all with that. I just want to make sure that we are doing the right thing, and we can find somebody to fill that seat.
Well, the motion's on the floor.
We've got a motion's on the floor, but we're having a discussion.
Well, the other thing is, obviously, with Mr. Jett's passing, we're at four, and we can have a two-two tie, so then if it's an applicant, their application is dead one way or the other, because there's no vote, or the general public. To me, it's not fair to anybody to just sit and do nothing.
Right.
Well, I've got to agree with you on that too, Tom. It's not fair, but I'm just trying to look at both sides, that's all.
Extra meetings is nothing that we should be afraid of.
We could, we could go through the process.
We'd go through the process.
We all still, the majority's going to have to vote and approve an individual, so...
Yep.
Again, you know, we could approve someone, or it could be a two-two vote there too as well, but, you know, we can at least go through the process.
That's right, go through the process.
Hopefully, we'll be able to decide on a person. And because we all need to vote for that person, which should be, but it may not happen. But if it does, that's great. I have no problem with going on and doing it, but I was just, just wanted to talk a little bit about it. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ted Lock, can you come up with some kind of application form?
Yes, sir. We can come up with an application, and then post that on our webpage and advertise it in the paper as well.
It doesn't have to be elaborate, just enough to, one, to show a person is interested.
When would the board like to have the applications received by, so that you have time to review those? Because...
Yesterday.
All right.
Can we do like a two-week period of accepting applications and close it? In business days?
All applications ought to be due by the 8th of September. Is that all right for y'all, fellas? That gives us a week and two days.
Yep. Okay.
Gives us seven, seven business days.
Okay. That's fine.
Is that all right for everybody?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Tedlock?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll do everything by September, September 8th. That's where everything should be due. We don't have much time in it, and I'm just trying to split it up a little bit.
That's fine.
All right. I don't know how many applicants we'll have, but I hope we have a few. All right, any other discussion on that? All right, Lockwood. Oh, you want me to do it, Lockwood?
No, you can go ahead.
All right, doesn't make any difference. All right, next item is appointment of a vice chair. We don't have a vice chair since Ronnie passed away, and I know Tommy's opinion on that's going to be the same as everything else, and I agree with Tommy too. We need a vice chair.
Yeah, and if, not necessarily, not necessarily anything happened to you, but, you know, your mother, you could be called out to deal with her.
I may have to leave.
Yeah, and then we'd be sitting here, twiddling our thumbs, we don't have anybody to run a meeting.
Yeah, no, that's what I've been thinking, looking at and thinking about, and it's the same thing. We do need somebody here.
Yep.
I would like to have the opportunity to fill the rest of the year. I think it'd be a good learning opportunity for me if the rest of the board would agree to. But it's up to the rest of the board. Or y'all can put someone else in, it doesn't make no difference.
Whoever wants to do it.
I was thinking about, Tommy, let's see, I have this...
Doesn't make any difference. After December 31st, I don't have to worry about gaining experience.
Yeah, that's right.
I move we appoint Mr. Bryan as vice chairman.
Okay.
All right.
Because remember, you don't do anything unless something...
I just want the opportunity to learn.
As one vice president of the United States said, being vice president is equivalent to a pitcher of warm spit.
Well, that's a good comparison, ain't it?
I can't remember who it was, but I remember that quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
I thought it was recent, but I just couldn't remember.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Tom.
I bring up a quote every now and then.
All right.
What'd you say that, Tommy?
Point, Mr. Bryan.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second? I'll second it. All right, motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against?
No, I just wanted Tommy's...
All right.
That's fine. I think he told me, Mr. Long, that I was basically worthless as a pitcher of warm spit. I think.
You are now, you're the vice chairman.
Well, Tommy, you sure put a terrible one on him.
Hey, that's, that's, Lyndon Baines Johnson said that, and unfortunately, he became a hot brood. Thank you, Tommy.
All right.
Well, Johnson said it, and unfortunately, we know what happened with Kennedy.
Well, Tommy, I'm going to go there, and we're going to see what the warm spit can handle now. Now, he'll be all right. He will be all right. All right, next would be appointment to the Norvernac Regional Jail Board. Ronnie had been there for years.
Richard, you want to set on that?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking about it, if no one else wanted to do it. I'd be more than glad to set on it and represent the county there.
Got a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
All right, any, got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Next would be sanitary district vehicle purchase. I guess y'all got the email on that. Anything you need to tell us about that, Lockwood?
No, sir, other than just to, I guess, bring everybody up to speed, the vehicle has been picked up, that was picked up yesterday, and again, this was for the remaining funds that we had out of the USDA funds that we were doing through the Reedville Calioseur project. And in, when that project first started, when we were making the application process and everything, one of the things that we had to disclose was what we would do with any leftover funds, and vehicles were listed as one of those items. We did look on state procurement, and of course, talked to the sheriff, and that trying to find a truck on state procurement is very hard to do. We weren't able to find anything specifically there, and West Point Ford did have a F-150, they had one of them, and it was basically, we either get it now, or they couldn't hold the vehicle for us until this meeting. So that's when I emailed the board, and I asked if the board was okay with me moving forward with that, and then we just retroactively take action on that, that action, so. And West Point Ford did match state contract pricing, so.
Vice chairman, I retroactively approved the purchase of the vehicle.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion, second. Thank you, Tommy. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. That's all the items we have on our list today for county administrator items. Tedlock, you have anything else right now?
I do have one other item, and actually, just kind of looked at this today. One of the things that the board was discussing was the position for the radio system, and we kind of going back and forth as far as whether that individual, where that individual needed to be located. And I do have the job description, if it falls under the IT position, but one thing I don't know if the board wants to consider, rather than doing the IT position, is to do an assistant chief, which is similar to the way the other localities are handling that position. I know with the increased staff that we have there, I don't know, that would certainly be of help to Chief Balderson, and I think that was something that he was planning on placing in the budget for next fiscal year as well. So instead of creating a totally separate position, if it's something that we want to integrate into a position that we know that we need, I don't know if the board wants to go that route, rather than creating an IT radio coordinator position. Just wanted to get your feelings specifically on that.
I think we need to, we got an opportunity to fill two positions and use one person.
Yep.
And I think we need to match what the other counties have done with their person that's come on board with the radio system and maintaining radios and the equipment and all, is that person is in the emergency management side of things. It's a whole different technology and a whole different IT. Not saying that Robert can't do it, but we don't need to push that on him, and we don't need to push what Robert does on this other person, because it's, both of them's going to have a full plate. And that will also allow the EMS chief, if he's in a meeting, on a training, on vacation, he's got a person that's in charge that can keep everything running as smooth as possible.
I agree with Jimmy. Obviously, having 20 full-time employees underneath his control, plus whatever number of part-time people, that's beyond any span of control that an individual can handle. And he is entitled to be on leave, on vacation, or whatever, so I agree, this would be the best way to handle it.
I agree with both Jimmy and Tommy. That would be the best way to handle the situation.
And some counties with smaller number of full-time employees have assistant chiefs or captains, some position below, who can step in. I know Richmond County has that.
All of them do now, because the system's had grown.
Yeah.
And I've just, they're looking at opportunity to fill two positions and utilize that same person.
That in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir. Second.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
One more, one more thing. Last month, we voted on, or the board put Lockwood and myself on this, on this radio committee. This is nothing against Lockwood. I'm not trying to say anything bad, but I don't know if we've done the right thing, and Lockwood, don't take this wrong, by putting Lockwood on the committee, because when this starts rolling, we're going to have to have somebody before this person is hired, or when this, to go to radio sites and to do a lot of research on the system, and to oversee the people coming in here. And I don't know if we should have put that burden on Lockwood. It's going to be a lot of time, and it's going to be overwhelming, and it's going to be, when they come here, they don't do eight-to-fives, they may start at eight o'clock in the morning, and they may be in a radio shelter at 10 o'clock at night.
Well, what do you think, Lockwood?
Currently, we've split that up a little bit between the sheriff, the chief, and myself. And Chief Balderson has stepped up to the plate, certainly, and he's gone to the sites and started doing some of the preliminary work for me, to help me out getting some of that information together. So I certainly appreciate his time getting that information to AJ with L3 Harris. So that's certainly up to the board. I mean, I certainly have plenty of meetings, so I'm not going to argue.
I mean, I'm just looking at the time, and when this thing kicks off and gets running, and they're here, it's going to be a lot of time. And until we get a person hired to really come in and learn this, I just didn't want to take away from what you've got going on, and I remember you said you had a lot of meetings, so if you, you know, it's whatever the board wants to do. I just didn't want to overwhelm you and didn't want to overload you.
No, I mean, that's certainly up to the board.
I'm going to vote to keep him there.
You're going to have more than him do?
Yeah, I'm going to vote to keep him there.
Well, I mean, I certainly appreciate the help that...
You know, I don't want to have to clone you.
No.
How was the motion worded? Was it just you?
I think it was just me. I don't think an alternate was doing.
I would move to amend that motion, a separate motion, whether you want to do it. So Mr. Tedlock or his designated, which could be the chief, or it could be Drew or somebody, so it's, it's a position, obviously, it's in a leadership position, either simply county administrator assistant, or the chief of EMS.
That's fine. You're right. I'll second it.
Yeah, that would lighten the load on him a little bit, because Lockwood, he needs to be here as much as possible, but I know he'll do anything in the world we can, but I don't want him, I don't want him overworked.
We can't split him.
I don't think it'd be a good idea.
No.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, Mr. Tedlock, maybe that'll take a little bit of that load off you a little bit.
No, I appreciate that.
And I've got one other thing, and this is way up there. We had talked about doing another event with the tavern folks, and Halloween is close by, and I think Morgan has reached out to the YMCA, and the YMCA, and the county, and the tavern committee, we would like to do a trunk or treat over here in the parking lot, around where they have the farmer's market. Basically, get that set up, working with the YMCA and the tavern, get it advertised, get it out there, and basically, only thing that the county might want to do is buy a little bit of candy, so we could have a booth set up to give candy to the kids, but I just think we need to do some more community outreach.
Well, I think we need to add the Boys and Girls Club too, because they, you know, they're in the county.
Yeah.
So, yep.
All right, Morgan, you reach out to the Boys and Girls Club too?
Okay. But basically, we're just going to provide a place for the people in the community, and the county, and whoever else wants to participate, come and park the car, pop the trunk lid, and hand their candy, in a safe environment for the kids for Halloween. And once we get through that, we're going to be working on the Christmas program this year.
All right. The Christmas program was a big hit last year.
Well, a lot of people said they're looking forward to it again this year. But this is something new. I think the YMCA was doing a trunk or treat, and they had stopped, correct?
No, it's school.
Okay.
The YMCA does one every year, but they're...
Oh, okay, so everybody wants to come behind. Okay, good. So it's a lot of people coming, coming together to make this happen, so it should be a good event.
That would be good. Is that all right with the rest of the board?
That's all I've got.
Excuse me, any other board members have any questions, comments? Lockwood, tell me something. We get this new person coming in, where are we going to put him?
That is a discussion. I've been talking to Calvin over the last couple of days to see, one, if that was something that he was interested in, in me pursuing with the board. And we did talk about the matter of space, because there's not any space in the house One thing that we did discuss was that now with bringing on the fifth individual, and we have the, that fifth person as the supervisor, and they would be there for the whole shift, is to use that supervisor, and they would take over the office where Calvin is now. And then we could look at having space where the voter registrar's office used to be on the IT side, where IT is now. I spoke to Robert, and we were looking at possibly having two individuals where Robert's office is now, the IT and assistant IT, and then on the other side, where Matt Bailey's office used to be, have that office as the chief and assistant IT. chief and assistant chief for the time being. Really, that's the only space that we have. We really don't have that much room to expand. We can't put them upstairs from the standpoint of handicap accessibility if anybody wants to come in to see those individuals.
One other thing you're gonna have to plan on for this individual for a period of time, as all of these mobile and portable radios come in, you're gonna have to have a place to store them. The portable radio is gonna have to be with the individual that's gonna be programming and entering them into the system. So they're gonna have to have their hands on each one of those portable radios probably three or four different times to even get them set up. So it's gonna be, can require a nice size room. Is it any part of the old sheriff's office that's salvageable, that could be cleaned up, that don't leak, that could be used?
We would have to reevaluate it. The heating and air was turned off to that building, water was turned off to that building. So I have not been in there for some time, so I don't know what the condition of that building is at this point.
Well, I think maybe we need to go over and look at it. We can go over tomorrow, the next, tomorrow, whenever. Let me know what's available for you.
All right.
And whoever else wants to go too.
Just wear a mask.
Yes, gotta wear a mask because there was mold in that building.
If it was mold before, which I'm sure it was, it is not gonna decrease.
It has grown.
Was the power...
I just hope it's not crawling.
Problem is, this is what you can't see as much as what you can see.
Yeah. But if that building's in that bad a shape, we're gonna need to do something else. We need to demolish it.
Yeah.
And we need to get that, if it is in shape like that, we need to go ahead and get that taken care of. And we're gonna need to think about more space to put our employees. Where is the next question? And how big the building is gonna be and whatever. But we're gonna have to do something else. Yes, sir.
Just since you're thinking about space, I think it's next year, we have to think about where reassessment should go also.
What was that last part?
I want to think about where reassessment will go next year.
Yeah, reassessment's gotta come in too.
Right.
Yep. We're gonna, we're gonna be short space, well, we already short space. So we need to think about doing something else. I guess we need to have some discussions on that.
You do have the request from the electoral board related to additional space needing for...
Yep.
The election next year.
Yeah. And we just don't have the space.
I think we need to have that discussion next board meeting.
Next board meeting, yep. Any other discussion on that? All right, also, we need to think about this roof on this building. We got leakage starting in this roof, so we need to go ahead and proceed with getting some estimates to replace this roof. Do you need that in a motion?
If you want to put that in a motion.
I'll put that in a motion that we do start to seek competitive bids to replace this roof.
I'll second that motion. Need to move a little quicker on bad roofs and making its own buildings than what we've done in the past.
And that's for the entire roof because we did get an estimate for just a portion of the roof. You're speaking of the entire roof.
Yeah, I'm speaking of the entire roof because I can't see doing it piecemeal, only fix a small portion of it now when all the shingles have the same amount of age on to it. We'll be right back here next year replacing some more. So we might as well get it all done at one time and then we'll have another roof that hopefully will be good for hopefully 20 years or more. Okay, you finished?
Yeah, I got a motion. Yeah, and got a second. I was just waiting for a discussion if anybody else had anything. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Luttrell, how about the EVV bank? How about the, have we finalized, get that fixed or what?
That is being finalized. The contractor had submitted some information to the engineer on the roof material and he had sent that back requesting some additional information, some clarification on some things. So that is still moving forward.
Okay, how about the old school board office? Have we had any update information on that?
We haven't. The planning commission, of course, finalized their review of everything and sent that to the board. But no, we haven't moved on on anything pertaining to that building.
How about cleaning up other sites?
The trash sites.
There's still a lot of trash, stuff around the sites.
I have...
Did you see the...
Been in contact. I contacted Vince Jameson with Waste Management and I emailed him several pictures of the sites and the trash at the sites and also the liquid. I went up there the following day and took some pictures. So he got back to me a little bit later on and asked me to give him a call, so I need to, that's where we're at right now, I need to give him a call.
Okay, thank you.
One of the doors is off in the, one of the classrooms behind the old school board office. I don't know if somebody ripped it off or the wind got into the what, but that one classroom back there is wide open.
On the trailer or the...
On the trailer, yes.
Okay. I'll get cars to check on it.
All right, any other board members have any comments?
All right, one other thing. You know, who responsible for when I happen to see a dead deer today over by Walcomica?
I saw it too.
Who picks those up now?
E-DOT is in the right of way.
Nobody picks it up unless you want it, Jim.
No, no, somebody saw me.
E-DOT doesn't pick them up anymore?
They don't do that anymore? Or do they? Huh? Yeah, if it's heat on to them, they'll have them taken care of in a few days.
So if a dead deer is laying in the middle of the road, what's gonna happen? E-DOT won't do anything?
You'll have to call them to try to get them to remove it because it's a traffic hazard then.
I understand that, that's what I...
On the side of the road, they don't consider it anything. They don't pick up dead animals. They don't pick up the small dead animals in the middle of the road.
I know.
They rely on someone else to go there and move it themselves.
Granny Clamton?
Yeah.
Well, it shouldn't be like...
So if you were going down the road and you chose to, you'd have to move it.
Well, the thing is, you can't take a deer without going through the Department of Wildlife Resources.
Yeah, but the only thing you could do is pull it to the side.
Yeah.
But E-DOT ought to be picking these animals up.
Yeah, I'm gonna mention that next...
You said this was in Walcomica Church?
Yeah, Walcomica Church.
Whereabouts?
Before you get to Good Luck on the left.
Yep, before you get to Good Luck.
Yeah.
Go past the, where they did the tunnel work, come up the hill.
Looked like that was a doe. It was, it was a pretty good sized doe. Well, I see that deer get the grass in those two spots, but people won't have to pull out, way out in the road, so that's good.
All right, we got anything else? All right, that's all of the county administrator items and county items. Want to say other things?
Wait, one other thing. We said the deputies will be driving if they see something fall off a truck, they'll stop them and offer them something to cover it or what? What did we say about that?
They might get a ticket.
I know, it could give them a ticket or give them something to cover it up. Then we, how can we get that word out? Because you got a lot of trash on the road and...
Isn't that letter committee...
Anti-letter committee is working on it.
I know, the letter committee really done a good job this past week bagging up. But they're gonna need some help as far as those limbs falling off because it can damage a person's car and I know that for a fact because I was coming around and realized and I hit one and it knocked my lights out. So we need to make sure if we giving something out, we need to let the public know that, hey, we need to help them because you're gonna see a lot of accidents with those, that stuff falling off with no cover.
Yes, sir. The anti-letter committee is going after, trying to seek a grant to get the cargo nets that would go over the bed of a pickup truck. They have not received that yet. That application was just submitted, so.
Well, something can be posted on the county website and/or the sheriff's office, Facebook page and stuff like that. Use your electronic means as much as you can too.
Use all the means you can because it is a lot of stuff on the side of the road. It's all kinds of boxes, it's building supplies, name it.
Furniture, yeah. Especially just past Macedonia Church on the right.
Yeah, that's been sitting there for over a month. And there's another piece, I forget where that one is, it's a sofa. That's a chair right down at Macedonia, but it's a sofa on the other spot. And then there's another wooden chair sitting, and this was right on the edge of the tower.
He won't go in, we're gonna have a living room suite.
Yep. And you see TVs too?
Yeah, well, they ain't worth much.
No, they ain't worth much, but it's dangerous.
May I say something?
All right.
There is a piece of children's toy on Route 200 as you get ready to go into the previous pipe site at the county when the cutters came through. They physically moved it over close to one of the guidelines or power pole while they were feed eating so that the cutting equipment when they came through wouldn't hit it. They didn't pick it up and take it away as refuse, which is, they had a team do it. They just took it and put it over where it wouldn't get hit by the power.
Yeah. It's not gonna move, it'll stay right there.
All right, anyone else have anything else? Our next item is to go into a closed meeting. Tadlock, unless you give us the verbiage or language?
Sir, I need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711A1 for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator and county attorney because they are deemed necessary in their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section 2.23712.
Full move with Mr. Tadlock's read.
Second. All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna go into closed meeting and we'll be back as soon Motion, Mr. Luttrell?
Yes, sir. The, I need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting as certified by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Full move, Mr. Tadlock, language.
All right, I have a second. All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Long?
Aye.
Ms. Bryan?
Aye.
Ms. Tomlin?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right, we are back in the open meeting. We need to do anything or what do you need from us?
No, I think we're good. We will try to get with Ms. Sewell for the September 7th meeting at 5:30, I think is what she...
5:30, yeah.
5:30. And so we just need to carry over the meeting.
We carry over to September the 7th at 5:30.
All right, got a motion, I have a second.
I want several things I want to ask Luttrell before we close out. One, you know, cigarette tanks, update on that?
We are advertising that for the September meeting, September board meeting for a public hearing.
Okay. How about, we're supposed to get a list of all the land that the county own?
We, the planning commission just wrapped that up and you should have an email regarding that information.
And I know we have, I suppose we all lie with, a lot of counties have the family dollar and a dollar tree, but you know, I see Langston. Now, they're small, they're a smaller county than we are, but I can see where some of the roads lead in to help them out. But do you have calls for any other? I mean, Langston County is getting four or five new places over there within the next month. Do you have any of those? I know we had a chance to get Walmart years ago and a couple of reasons why it failed through, but do you have any of those places that could help us with jobs calling you that want to move in? Do you get any of those?
Nothing specifically, but I think that's something that we could certainly pass down to the Economic Development Commission, have them, now that we do have a quorum on that commission now, so they can start certainly having meetings again and maybe approach that subject to see what they have.
Yeah, I'd like to see that happen. Okay, that's all I have.
Motion's been made and seconded.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.